Call to order this August the 10th, 2016, meeting the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Commissioner Renaud?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present. Okay, if you'd all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Scott Dickinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you this morning for this beautiful day in Ottawa, Kansas, and, Lord, we're just thankful for this group of folks as they lead our county, and, Lord, we continue to lift them up and pray for them and ask that you give them guidance. We continue to pray for our community. We know that we've seen some crazy stuff go on at times, but we pray for our Sheriff's Department, our law enforcement, our EMS, and others who are first responders. We continue to pray for your safety on them. Just, Lord, help us as we go forward as a county and the things that we do, the business that has to be taken care of. Lord, guide us and direct us in everything we do. Watch over our world as things go on. Help us to remember to pray for each other, to love each other, and be kind to one another. Just watch over us today. Keep us safe and keep us in your peace. We ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Thanks, Scott.
Good morning, Cleon. That takes us to correspondence and organizational business.
First things, to touch on a couple of things regarding today is, number one, the Teen Park contribution. After discussing a few items with the Commissioners, there was some concerns expressed about that, and after conversing with the Chair, it was asked that that be brought back at a later date to and for the Commissioners have the opportunity to talk about that contribution at a later date. So that has been taken off of the agenda for today at the direction of the Chair, and again, we'll be bringing that forward at a future date. Second thing is that we discussed on Monday the 911 change in management and some other things, the transfer of who oversees that department. Part of that is that there is a resolution that is required for that, and putting that together, it is sizable, and to have adequate time to review it with both the County Commissioner, or, excuse me, the County Counselor, as well as the County Sheriff and the Emergency Management Director. It was going to be rushed to get that on today's agenda, so we've moved that back to give ample time to review that resolution and to make sure that we get it right the first time. So those two things, I just wanted to touch base on that. Second thing is, is that, just a recog- or last thing is a recognition of Ryan Fine, so...
Good morning. I'm Norm Bowers, local road engineer with the Kansas Association of Counties. I hope you all read my article every month on roads in the County Comment, you know? I wanted to make sure I got introduced because I use an old picture in that, and so my hair's a little grayer than in the County Comment. Not that politicians would ever do that, but I do that. I am here to recognize Ryan. The Kansas Association of Counties, Highway Association, Public Works Association, and KDOT got together to form a training program for road workers here six, seven years ago, and they give day courses on different items and have three certificate levels, and it's, of course, one, two, and three. The last one's called the Master Road Scholar, and it takes about 30 days of instruction to get to that, and there's only been 12 or 13 people in the state so far that have attended. Ryan is one of those, and we thought it was important that we recognize the training that Franklin County has been dedicated to, because there's a lot of places that they just do stuff because we always did it that way, and you guys don't do that here. You know, you try to keep current with what's going on and that kind of thing, and you do that through training and meetings and that kind of stuff. And I did want to recognize Ryan. I'm going to have a photographer take a picture because we want to get this in the Association newsletter. Now, if you have a official photographer, that'd be okay, too. Okay, we're going to get the Commissioners in this. This is good. I like this. Yeah. Okay. First of all, I want to say it's a big job to stay awake for 30 days. Congratulations on that. Okay, how are we going to get the Commissioners in this? Yeah, come on back. They don't want to hear about you getting fired in the next month or so. Okay, one more. I wasn't looking, Jim. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ray.
Janet, we have everybody sign up for public comment.
Yes, we do. Jean Hurt.
Takes us to public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the Commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of County Commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Jean?
I come here today with a heavy heart that an individual that had been very devoted to this county and was an instrument inside this chambers for many years. Unfortunately, this individual passed away yesterday. It was Della Sangren. I know a lot of people in the courthouse knows Della, yes, and she had, she was in a car accident last year, and she did, went and did surgery, and she made it through that ride, but then there's complications. Della was quite an instrumental personal on the issue of appraisals on homes because she owns many, many rental places here in Ottawa and in Lawrence, and I felt it was reasonable to make a comment this, this morning because she was so active and been in this chambers many, many times back 2005 to 2010 on matters of the appraisals. So with a heavy heart, and everybody should say a prayer for Della. Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda. Items that are on the consent agenda today that need considered and approved will be the Franklin County meeting of August the 3rd, the minutes, Franklin County Budget Hearing was also August the 3rd, 2016, the minutes, and the Franklin County Study Session for August the 8th, 2016, minutes. Also have claim vouchers in the amount of $29,497.20. There are no tax change orders, and we also have a special payroll for the pay date of August the 5th, 2016, in the amount of $422.57. If there's no questions on the consent agenda, we'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Have a motions or a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Item one was the Teen Park Contribution Presentation. We're not, it's not on there. Item two will be considered approving the lowest responsible bid from Caterpillar Financial Services for financing two 2016 120M AWD motor graders. Jim?
Good morning, Commissioners. Bids were selected for financing the motor graders. You mentioned the bids were open on August 2nd. Bid tabulation was attached to the cover sheet. The lowest responsible bid is from Caterpillar Finance. The request is a motion awarding the financing to Caterpillar Finance.
I'd make a motion to award the financing to Caterpillar Finance.
Have a motion. Is there a second to awarding the bid to Caterpillar Finance?
I have a question. I don't know whether you want to make a second before we do that or do it before we get a second on it. One of the, one of the local financial institutions bid is a total of $51 and change difference, which, out of 267,600, so is that something that is advantageous or not advantageous or something that we should consider the fact that, that that's important or not?
It's 135. About the time you pay fees.
135?
I believe that's correct.
I'm looking at the one to the left of that one.
Oh, without the, gotcha.
Yeah, the one that's 267,602.75 is $51 and change less, and I don't know. That's why I'm asking that question. I agree that the lowest bid, responsible bid, is Caterpillar. There's no question about it, but it's $50, $51 difference from some of our local institutions who have bid for us and have definitely done what they can probably for us. I don't know. I'm asking that question. Is that...
That makes good sense. I understand. I'll rescind my motion.
I mean, I don't know. We're responsible to taxpayers, and that is $51, but out of 267,600, I just felt like maybe it's doing that, and Jim's done his work. Nothing gets that. I think that's exactly what we would expect.
That's something we've done in the past for mainly commodities we buy if there's a local vendor, but, I mean, out of more than a quarter million dollars for $51 to give to a local business or to, you know, to be able to go with a local business that employs probably 20, 30 people.
What do you think?
I can, I could get there. I could understand that.
And I, ever since I've been on the Commission, we have kept this local, but I, first time I've actually seen the Caterpillar Financial Services in the bids.
Sure.
They've been in the bids. They just haven't been competitive.
They just haven't been competitive, so...
Then I'll make a motion.
Okay, the motion was...
Yeah, I rescinded mine. Yeah, go ahead.
So floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Kansas State Bank with a total payment of $267,602.75.
You made a good point. I'll second that, Randy.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Kansas State Bank.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
I just might want to say that we are buying a Caterpillar, so I don't, I think I'll say yes, too.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
And I even go so far as to compliment the other institutions in Franklin County who made a bid that also, I'm sure, did what they could do to try to help us out.
Okay, item number three is consider setting a public hearing for the meeting of August the 31st, 2016, to consider vacating Neosho Road, east of Tennessee Road to the terminus, whatever that might be.
The end.
Huh?
It's a dead-end road.
It's a dead-end.
The department has received a request from two of the three property owners to vacate Neosho Road, east of Tennessee, to the east end of the center section of Neosho was previously vacated, so it would be from Tennessee east to the end, and set a public hearing for August 31st to consider the matter.
Which two of three requests? I don't have that page pulled up.
On the map, it's Madden and Hillman.
But Kilo did not?
Kilo did not.
Do they have access from somewhere else?
By crossing the creek.
So this would leave that portion landlocked?
The portion west of the creek.
Yeah.
Would not have access to a public road.
I don't see why we would want to entertain that idea.
Did Kilo respond or they're against this?
I'm not sure he was contacted.
Oh, okay. Well, I kind of second Commissioner Waymire. I kind of feel like I'd rather see him contacted and a response from him before we do this. It's been kind of the policy up here since I've been here anyway. When everyone's for this, okay, when someone's not for it in the group, then we have not done it.
Is the third, is the third landowner you're saying is, is Kilo property?
Yes, sir.
He will be notified that a public hearing is going to occur, so he'll have his opportunity to come in and speak, speak his piece. This is just to set the public hearing.
Do you know if there's currently entrance to that property off of that road they want to vacate?
Not of my, not of my knowledge.
That's what I was thinking. So they enter that property all the time now from either the south or the east and never from off of that?
It would be difficult. There's a couple trailers full of Madden's rental property occupying the right-of-way.
What's the reasons for wanting to vacate this road? Traffic going down it, or they say?
Future traffic going down it.
I think we could have a public, public hearing and let them all come in and speak their piece about it, so I'll make a motion to set the state for public hearing.
Okay, have a motion to set a public hearing on August the 31st to vacate Neosho Road, east of Tennessee Road to the, I'll second this. Have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
No.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, consider authorizing the Chairman to execute the agreement for project number 59-30, KA 4377-01. Jim?
Board of County Commissioners authorized the application for the KDOT Access Management Construction Project Program last year on October 28th. Excuse me. The application approved US 59 with left turn and right turn lanes at Kingman, Ave. 750 foot of Kingman to the east. The application has been approved and awards up to $1,250,000 for construction. The request is a motion authorizing the Chairman to execute the agreement.
Any questions on this?
Do we know if that amount of money will cover the entire project or not?
It's up to $1,250,000. We're responsible for moving utilities, engineering, right-of-way, and any other things that are non-participating.
I think if we're going to improve the new south, you know, business park, I think this is something we need to get done and get started on, and this is show people that we're moving forward with the business park, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the authorizing the Chairman to execute the agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Janet?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, next item will be the consideration of the tourism promotion, marketing, and event coordination services proposals.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just to start, I've put everything online as far as part of the agenda packet so that you've had the opportunity and the public has had the opportunity to see what we're doing and the recommendations, so, but I just do want to hit on a couple of things. The background is, is that on May 16th, 2016, 2016, a request for proposal was submitted for review by the Board of County Commissioners for Tourism Promotion, Marketing, and Coordination Services. This RFP was advertised per policy and opened for 30 days with closing date proposal for the proposals on June 28th, 2016. I put together an ad hoc committee to evaluate the proposals in order to ensure that the surrounding communities who had a vested interest in tourism and promotion of the county that were, they were involved in the process. The committees included the Honorable Mayor of Seneca, Mayor of Pomona, the Honorable Mayor Horn, Mayor of Williamsburg, Tammy Jones, City Clerk for the City of Wellsville, Janet Paddock, County Clerk of Franklin County, and also myself. This committee received the proposals, and then we met on July 12th to discuss the proposals and to review the scoring matrix that were presented as part of that. On July 26th, the committee received presentations from both organizations that had submitted proposals. That would be the Franklin County Visitors Bureau and then also the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce. Each committee member submitted after the presentations were heard, and there was a question and answer session with each proposer to discuss different things and questions that the committee might have. After that, each committee member submitted a scoring sheet to me, and that was consolidated into one single scoring sheet for each entity. That is part of the agenda, so it is attached as well. The observations and comments, those are, again, were consolidated into a single sheet. The scores were combined into a single scoring sheet, and then additionally, in order to make sure that we knew, just want to, in the interest of fairness, the names of who made what comment, who provided which score, that was redacted. That was something that I thought was pretty important because there was concern about that this has been a highly contentious issue, and the evaluators wanted to be as fair and honest as they could, but put down exactly who said what. They were concerned about that. So we redacted names in order so that people could remain anonymous and say exactly what they felt and give the scores that they felt were fair and accurate. One adjustment has been made in the interest of fairness in that one of the evaluators was unable to attend the presentation, and it was my position that that score should not have the same weight as the other scores of the committee members that attended the presentations. He did have, and they had the opportunity to ask questions. In that spirit, the scores of that evaluator were counted as half and added into the scoring metrics, because just looking at the presentations, he did have some concerns and shared those with me. After receiving the presentations from the proposers, the committee discussed the pros and cons, went through, made several comments, and the scores came back, and the discussion lent itself that the final recommendation is to recommend the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce for this service to be provided to the county. It was the opinion of the committee that the area, Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce had the most progressive and innovative proposal and most clearly addressed the points that are outlined in the RFP. Along with the points that came down, that the sum of points and the comments that were made, they were the clear winner by a large margin. It is our position that the Chamber has a proven history of success, not only within Ottawa, but within the county, region, and state, as evidenced by their many activities and partnerships around, again, the region, the county, and the state. And so it is with confidence that we make that recommendation to the Commissioners. I will now stand for any questions or comments that the Commissioners might have on this.
One comment I do want to get out there is to the volunteers that for many years have been helping out there and giving their time to make this work, and very much appreciate them. It's nothing to do with the job they've done or what's going on right now, and I want to thank them for their time, and hopefully, however we choose to go on this, they will continue to be a part of it and help whoever's doing the tourism and making it work successfully.
Commissioner Howard, if I may, I would, I would echo that sentiment. The volunteers have provided a valuable service. They help keep the doors open during times that it would be financially impossible for that many staff members to make sure that the doors are open to the visitor center. So in that spirit, we are still going to need their service. Just because the service provider changes the objectives and the service that they provide by volunteering their time is still going to be sorely needed, and so it is my hope that the, they will feel a commitment to the overall service and what is being accomplished instead of just to the service provider. The Chamber of Commerce still works and has many of the same objectives, and it is my hope that they will understand that that commitment is still needed from them and that the Chamber would certainly welcome their service, continued service.
Well, I'm not sold on this, so let me just kind of ask both a question and make a statement mixed together there. I'm not sure exactly the background, how this played out initially, but I know that, or I feel that the Chamber at one point was involved, and the CVB evolved out of that as Advisory Board to becoming C 5036 or whatever they are. My point is that we are basically contracting someone to provide a service, and in their budget, they have listed as a cost for administration, I think it's 70 some thou- I'll get right down to it here in a second. $75,000 in salaries and payroll taxes. My question is, then, why are we not, as Franklin County, if this is the transient guest tax that we're responsible for, why are we not hiring a director of tourism for whatever salary, locate him in the Visitors Information Center, and move forward from there and do it ourselves with that person as opposed to contracting it out? I know, obviously, some things work advantageously, but in the past, apparently somehow, we became either dissatisfied or wanted to take a look at what our options were with the Visitor Center Convention Board, DCB, and then with that, are looking to turn around and doing the same thing again. So the Chamber takes it over, and one year from now, we look at it and we say, "Well, we don't like what you're doing," and so we go back and I just feel like we're not going anywhere except moving laterally with an option that we hope will work out or will not work out, and financially, I don't see how we gain. When I look at all the expenses that are listed on there, where's that doing anything to put motel rooms booked? And I look at some of their stuff on there, they document the day at the farm. Day at the Farm puts people in bedrooms? I don't see that. So the Chamber does the events, I understand that, but if they're going to go out and help with tourism to bring people into the county that are going to stay in motel rooms, and I look at the financial on it, I don't see where we're gaining anything by going that route. Just my thoughts.
My thoughts are...
My thoughts are, I was there in the beginning when the Chamber of Commerce did provide visitors services and there was a spinoff from the Chamber to create the Visitors Board back in the early two thousands. And that's when the Visitor Bureau, well, the Chamber actually was involved in hiring the director and they spun off from the Chamber of Commerce back there in the early two thousands. Became an entity unto themselves, basically, and built that organization up to about thirty-three volunteers to help them out from our entire community and providing good services, I thought, for many years. I'm a little concerned about going back to the Chamber and starting all over again because I might end up doing exactly the same thing. And I'm kind of hearing what Commissioner Renaud has said about, maybe it ought to be a county department instead of outsourcing that responsibility. So, I'm not, I appreciate the work the committee has done. And I went along with the RFP because I was, even though I was a minority of the vote, I felt we, I supported the majority vote at that time and thought we ought to go ahead and do it and just see what, see what comes in and go from there. So, anyway, that's my thoughts on it. I'm not so sure we need to make any changes myself.
If, one more question, the gas transit tax. It would, my understanding that it's possible that the county would not have to be the one taking in that tax. It could have been another entity or it could still be.
The city would be able to if they, if we would, if we relinquished it and gave it to the city.
So, here's my thought. If we're keeping, we're taking the responsibility or taking on the authority to take the money and then we're going to give it to the Chamber to work with, why not just give them the whole thing to begin with and get it out of our hands and not have anything with to do with it? Or I just feel like we're being, letting somebody be a middleman to go do what we could be doing, I guess. Anyway, that's my, I don't know what that process would be.
To that point, Commissioners, is that the committee did talk about this a little bit of looking at whether it could be a county office in itself. And that is something that was discussed with the committee that if they decided that the proposals that came in, if neither fit, they didn't have to make a recommendation on one of those things. They could opt to make a different recommendation than just from the proposals. And we looked at that, but we felt pretty strongly with what we received from the Chamber of Commerce is that it fit and it fit the needs most appropriately. I know that there's been discussion about, okay, we're just going backwards and doing what we've done in the past with the CVB and I would disagree with that. It is my position in that I've talked to members of the board, the directors during that time and then also the Chamber President and Chamber Director at that time about what was happening at that time. Essentially, what happened from, and this is again from my discussions with them, is that the Board of County Commissioners set a, established a board, Tourism Board and appointed them and that they were working under the five oh one C six status, the nonprofit status of the county, excuse me, of the Chamber of Commerce. Not only that, but they were also working under, because they were working under that status, they were also working under the financial oversight because of that. Because if any dollars that were spent from the tourism was going through all of the accounts and all of the bank accounts and auditing and government generally accepted accounting practices of the Chamber of Commerce. So, the Chamber of Commerce had not only a interest, but also an obligation to make sure that whatever dollars were being spent were being spent appropriately and also met generally accepted accounting practices for that particular organization and that particular function within their organization. As time went on, that became more and more of an issue with a greater sense of entitlement, if you will, on parts, different individuals on the Tourism Board that were saying, "You don't tell us what to do. We were established by the County Commissioners. We do what we want to do and you don't tell us what to do." And again, it wasn't telling them what to do, it was making sure that they were spending the money in accordance with state, federal laws, meeting IRS codes and then generally accepted accounting practices. That's what they were doing.
So, a group of individuals we selected to review all this material and they also had the option of not recommending anybody. All the choices that are before us, they come from all over the county, they're representative. They took a good time, deal of time reviewing this material, listening to the full presentations. And the conclusion they came with up to was the Chamber. Their options could have been none at all, county department. But we've had this information in front of us, although we asked this board to review this, we've had this information in front of us for a day and a half. And we're contemplating, shrugging our shoulders and saying, "No, we did that fifteen, twenty years ago, so it probably isn't a good idea now." When I've read both proposals, front to back, the Chamber proposal would revitalize, bring rejuvenate, bring a new life to the way these dollars are being spent. There's a few small questions I'd like to ask if, if the representatives could come up here. But it is a proposal that has new ideas, brings new life to this service. I don't see how we could ask this group to dedicate themselves to reviewing the information, give us their opinion and just kind of shrug our shoulders and say, "No, we did that twenty years ago." Their organization, in no way, other than the same legal entity, the Chamber's revolving board is revolving, I mean, they're no way even the same group of people that were there twenty years ago. And the service they're proposed here is, like I say, completely different. It's, it would revitalize that, that, the way these dollars are being spent, which is what our objective was.
The last thing, the last comment that I would like to make and then give Mr. Cohen an opportunity to address the board and to present the presentation that we saw is that we did, I have thought at length about making this a county department and looking at that. And it is my very, very strong belief that we would, having one person do this within our department, if we established a department, would not be adequate. We would need more than that. And I still think that even with a couple of people, we would still be below and not achieve the greater efficiency or effectiveness or reach that the Chamber of Commerce achieves. Is that two people would not be able to use the additional resources when needed to access those like the Chamber of Commerce does. So, and I believe that Mr. Cohen could speak to that a little more. So, with that, I'll defer to him and allow him to show his presentation.
Honorable Commissioners, Honorable County Clerk, Mr. County Administrator, I want to start by thanking you for the opportunity to join in this conversation. And I want to emphasize that I want it to be a conversation. I appreciate some of the questions that have come forward already. It helps me to know what some of your concerns are, so I want to make sure that they're addressed. I appreciate that you have a serious decision to make here. And I think you've got several considerations. And so, the Chamber would like and thank you for the opportunity to be part of that decision-making process. I do want to mention that most of my executive board is here. If they want to just raise their hand, they're back there to support me in this effort so that you recognize and know that they are here too. I want to start by saying that when this proposal was first sent out, when the request for proposal was first sent out, it first came through my executive committee. And so, that was a tough decision, determine whether we took that to the board. And the discussion kind of centered around, well, if this is something that we did once upon a time, do we want to go back there? And so, it, after a fair amount of discussion at that level, we took it to the board. And at that point, I insisted the discussion started with our mission statement. See, am I just going to, what am I going to click here to? So, you can see the mission of the Chamber of Commerce there at the, at the bottom of the, of that first slide. And that discussion was involved. And when we see words like, whoop, it's going to take me just a minute here. Well, I don't need the pointer. When we see words like promote growth and economic vitality, provide leadership for improvement of business climate and improve the overall quality of life in our region, when the discussion talked about those items, we felt that this clearly was within our mission. And I think that's important. When an organization determines if they're going to add or even subtract something from their scope of services, it needs to clearly be within the mission of that organization. That is the mission that members are buying into, the mission that the community is buying into. Now, mission statements can be changed and that's a process that we can go through, but this is the mission statement that we're operating under right now. And the opportunity to provide tourism and bring people into our community is clearly within the scope and the mission of the Chamber of Commerce. So, we started reviewing who we were and how we'd gotten here. And the Chamber of Commerce is a hundred and fifteen years old. It first started, it was called the Ottawa Businessmen's Club and it actually met in the top floor of the building. This is just right next to our building. And it was a gentleman's club and there was a billiards room and there was also a ladies' parlor and there were pool tables up there. But it was businessmen that came together and they realized at that time that they could speak better together with one voice than they could all speaking individually. And it was that time that they started advocating for Ottawa and the Franklin County area. And as that evolved, it was chartered over eighty years ago and we've been a chartered chamber ever since. And in along about the nineteen eighties, and I know this because when I graduated from college, I was looking for ways to plug into the community, to become involved. And the first thing I did was join Franklin County Farm Bureau. And I joined that organization because they advocated for rural America. And I was a farmer at the time, did that for thirty years and appreciated what that organization stood for. But when I joined the Farm Bureau, and that was in nineteen eighty-two I did that, there was a lot of members that were on that board and in that organization. People like Leroy Wasman and Jack Beecham and Almeida Edwards that were also heavily involved in the Chamber of Commerce. And they encouraged me at that time to also become involved in the Chamber of Commerce because it was really the organization that, while Farm Bureau advocated for rural America, the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce advocated for the life and the breadth of our community. And that was really where I wanted to live, that was where I was planning to raise my family. So, I've been a continuous member of that organization since then. And right after I joined, I was a part of a committee that was considered a name change for the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce. And after much discussion, that was when the name was changed to the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce. And the discussion centered around, we wanted to be more involved with the entire county and not just the city of Ottawa. And it was also at that time that Convention and Tourism was added as an active committee of the Chamber of Commerce, or yes, of the Chamber of Commerce. And so, that gives you just a little bit of history that I actually experienced of when that began at the Chamber and a little bit about why. It was a conscious effort at that time by that Board of Directors of the Chamber to become more encompassing to the entire area. And so, the name was changed to the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce. And we have been involved, the Chamber has been involved in many projects that have been beneficial to the community. Through the early years, our community struggled with floods. And up until the nineteen fifties, I think our, most of our economic development energies centered around rebuilding. The town would flood and about twenty years later, for about twenty years, we would rebuild that and then there'd be another flood. And there's several significant floods coming through the nineteen hundreds that document that. But once the dikes were built and the flood system in place and water controlled, the dynamic became different. People will often ask me, "Well, why is Ottawa so long and narrow?" And the reason was because of the river, people continued to build away from the river. And the Chamber was involved in that flood control. The Chamber was involved in getting four exits off the interstate onto, into our community. And so, clearly, down through the years, as there have been opportunities to expand the conversation, to figure out ways that we can be more involved and help our community better, we're interested in that conversation. And that is why we wanted to join the conversation and talk about tourism and Convention and Tourism. Commissioner Renaud, you mentioned the Day on the Farm. That wasn't meant to be an example of something where we are putting people in beds. That's an example of an event that we have had the opportunity to develop and plan. We understand, the request for proposal asked for examples of things that we'd planned and that is one of them, it's been very successful. It's, it brings all third graders in Franklin County, the entire county, to one place and helps them understand and learn about agriculture, which I think is significant and important. You're correct when you say that's not something that brings people to spend the night in Franklin County. But I do want to talk about an event that maybe does have that potential. And that's the outdoor flea market. And I want to describe a little bit about how that has evolved. We've done that now for about nine years, the Flea Junk and Trunk. And we've always advertised through conventional media to get vendors and attract people into the community. And for the last eight, we've never had more than nine vendors at one time. This year, we took a different approach in our promotion of that event. We went to entirely social media. We created Facebook's events, we sent it out, we used Twitter. And we had a hundred and twenty vendors set up in, on Main Street. And we estimate near four thousand people in town on that day came to Ottawa to attend that event. That was a great realization for us. We understand that our community, not only our community, but our society is evolving and we need to approach things differently. And we want to bring that same philosophy to Convention and Visitors, to Convention and Tourism in the community. I think it's important that we evolve and that social media becomes a strong part of that. We no longer, previously, our social media presence involved the office staff Facebooking when we had time. We no longer take that approach. We realize that it needs to be strategic and intentional. And so, we contract with somebody to do all our Facebook and tweeting and also our constant contact. We realize that the graphics need to be sharp. We realize that the posts and the communication needs to be timed. needs to be timely and we had work that we were already doing and that we needed this to be something in addition that wasn't getting done. So we added that and that has been great in terms of how our events are promoted. Our Ladies Night Out, we are expecting one of the largest Ladies Night Outs this year that we've ever experienced, we're already through Facebook know that a lot of people have said, yes, we are coming. So that was capabilities we didn't have before. We do the social, we contract for our social media and then every month, the board receives a report about how that has grown and we look at the analytics on Facebook, Twitter and so the board has the opportunity to see and evaluate how those dollars are being spent and the return we're getting on those dollars and I think it's important. We fully realize that there are many areas in the county that are great destinations and I think that probably some of the concerns of the committee that we, that did the original evaluation might be that the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce has been more centered and concentrated on Ottawa and I would agree with that comment because generally, that's been where we focused our efforts, on the Ottawa community. We feel like that's been our strong push. So I want you to understand that if our scope were to get larger, we totally get that and we understand that there are many communities in this county, which I'm part of the Wellsville community, I live in rural Wellsville. So I fully understand that there are many communities and add to the rich history of Franklin County. We have major events that are in this community that we would like to be more involved with. We've been, we, as the Area Chamber of Commerce, we have been involved with most of these in one form or another, but we would be more intentional about that if this were to become included in our scope of services. We know the tourism economy is important and we think it can become more important. When the VIC opened in 2002, it, that's when Murray McGee opened it and that was a tremendous idea at that time. I think that that business model was current and even innovative and aggressive. I think that having a door, a front door to our community was a great idea to attract people off of one of those four interstate exits that our forefathers had had the foresight and knowledge to think about and create and that was a good idea, but our world has changed since then. 2002 predated Facebook. Google was not a known quantity at that time, the internet was just barely becoming known, which started in the late 90s and certainly, we didn't have the internet or phones in our cars and the ability to pull up webpages right on our, in our cars going down the road. At one time, people needed maps and they needed information about what's available, where can I stop? My wife and I took a two-week vacation this summer and our millennial daughter traveled with us part of the way on that and we had our destinations determined, we knew where we were gonna stop but for evening and for certain services. But as we traveled, my wife and daughter were constantly on their phones saying, hey, do you realize that we are three miles from this? And we stopped and we did that about a dozen times. And that was because we had our phones and they were looking for places that were attractions and none of them were information centers. They were all the attractions which they would Google the community and see what was in the area and we'd find something that we liked to do. Now, my wife and I might not have gotten there that quickly, but our millennial daughter, and I use that only as an example, is because the millennials are the generation that we need to address, they're the ones that are moving into their strongest income-earning capacity, they are the ones that are gonna drive tourism going forward. And that's what we need to think about and consider. So, once upon a time, the business model of having a place to stop, get information, was great. That model has come and gone and we need to think about what we can do differently. And you can see that from the course of time, when in its inception, the amount of visitors and stops at the visitor center has gone steadily down and I would expect that to continue. I think there is still great potential for that visitor center. I think that it has the ability to evolve into something different than what it has been. We have a tremendous asset in this community and that is the fact that two trails cross right in Franklin County. No other community has that, no other community especially that close to metropolitan area. I want to describe another scenario that I was involved with once upon a time in my life and I'd already mentioned my Farm Bureau experience and in the 80s, I had the opportunity to serve on the State Resolutions Committee of the State Farm Bureau. And do you know what the biggest debate was at that time? It wasn't taxes, the biggest, and it wasn't education. The biggest debate among the farm community at that time was the problem of public access to private ground. At that time, the concern was that our state was starting to urbanize. At that time, we were still a stronger rural state than we were urban state, but we could see that was quickly evolving and changing, we saw that was gonna be different. And so then, that we crossed that threshold, but we still, because leadership tended to be longer-serving, most of the leadership was from rural areas and we still had a lot of, I say we, the agriculture voice still had a lot of strong voice in the, in our state legislature. But that time has come and gone and we now are an urbanized legislature and we have people that live in the city that have strong agricultural roots, they remember their parents or their grandparents' farm and they still have a strong desire to be out in the outdoors. And we have that right here. This is actually, you know, of course, at that time, back in the 80s, the railroads were still going strong, there was no conception of abandoning railroads and creating trails. And as that happened, all of a sudden, the question about public access to private land started to diminish because we had the ability to access outdoors through the abandoned rail trails that now were great opportunities for people in the metropolitan area to have the ability to get outdoors for periods of time, to camp, hike, bike, whatever they wanted to do, different than just a park or a lake or something like that. And as time has gone on, we're seeing that evolve and become extremely popular and in this county, we have the crossing of two trails. But no place is there a place that people from the metropolitan area, and I'm including the whole Lawrence Johnson County, Kansas City metropolitan area, can come, park, access the trails and take advantage of that for a day. We think we need to change the visitor center to something more of this, a trailhead. There is no trailhead, we need to figure out a way to connect the trail and there are ways to do that. I've looked on Google Earth, I've had conversations with several, I serve on the, one of the Sunflower Foundation boards, I've had conversations with them about grants that, to talk about how we can connect these trails, there are ways to do this. So I think we need to transition the Visitors Information Center from a stop along I-35 to a destination in our community that brings people and encourages people to come to the Visitors Information Center and call it the Rail Trailhead of Ottawa and Franklin County. It needs to be a place where people can get, I've talked to several bikers and they say, you know, after they bike for a day, they need a kiosk where they can get Gatorades and power bars and this is the type of conversation we need to be having. And we need to be promoting this through social media. You know, that's the way we're gonna reach this generation, that's the way that we're gonna reach our, my generation that is starting to retire and look for activities, day trips that are, that they can do for a short time. I wanted to, I know you have copies of all the letters, but I wanted to lift out several of the quotes that I think are significant out of each one. Billy Hall is the president and CEO of the Sunflower Foundation. Their foundation got a grant that spent over $100,000 to do the landscape architecting for the five key bridges along the Flint Hills Trail. And one of those bridges is in Franklin County and it is just west of Ottawa and I can't remember if it's gonna be in a future slide, but it's in the presentation, a picture of that design is in the picture, is in the presentation. They are, this, I can tell you from being present in those meetings, that this trail is a high priority of that organization and we need to take advantage of that. And that was Billy Hall's comment, that they strongly support it. Midge Ransom, who I consider to be the health leader of Franklin County, but I consider her to be more than that. I've known Midge and I've also had the opportunity to see what other communities are doing. Midge is, leads our county far and above what most counties are doing. She just received the Blue Cross Blue Shield Pathways Grant, I was present to help receive that, I was very honored that she allowed me to take part in that. And privately, they told us that our application for that grant was head and shoulders above every other communities and that's the work of Midge Ransom, she supports this. I serve on an active transportation committee that Midge has started and that we're looking for ways to improve and enhance the rail trails in Franklin County and this would clearly, this plan that we're proposing would clearly fit in that. Wendy Lee, the Planning Director of City of Ottawa, serves on that active transportation and has been very, is greatly involved. You can see her supporting comment, Louis Reed, past chairman of the Ottawa Main Street Association in the past, USD 290 Board of Education member and also, he and his wife are very active bikers, they take vacations to bike and we've had private conversations, what can we do in this community to bring and raise awareness of the, what we have, this can be a destination location, but we have to start taking advantage of it, just saying it is not gonna do it. We have to, just like the Chamber evolved and changed how we attack promotion, we have got to evolve and change how we are thinking about tourism in this community. If we don't take advantage of what we have, they're not, it's not like if you build it, they will come, we need to tell them that it's here and get them to come here. And then lastly, the over-the-road gang, we wanted to make sure, because obviously, they are one of the strongest events that they have started and originated and planned, we wanted to make sure that they were on board with us. We're not looking to fly in the face of anybody, we are looking to build on what we have and go forward and we think we can create some new synergies and do some of that. I think some of what we propose is, some of the strength of what we propose is in the governance system and I can't remember if Commissioner Dunn or Commissioner Renaud was concerned that we're just returning to what we did, we're not looking to return to what we did, we want to structure this differently. We want to create a tourism board that sits under the Chamber of Commerce Directors, the Chamber of Commerce, the Board of, the Board of the Frank, or the Board of the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce, of which Franklin County has seats at that board, would appoint the tourism board, who would be involved then in hiring the Director of Tourism and that Director of Tourism would answer to the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. I think that builds in stability going forward. Certainly, there have been many people that have sat in my chair down through the years and certainly, the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors evolves and changes, but it's not a complete remake, there are certain standing positions on that board, of which Franklin County, the City of Ottawa are one. I think in a tourism board, there ought to be standing positions that include all of the communities in Franklin County and certain, certain positions so that we're making sure that we're considering what every community is doing and have that voice in the room when we're considering who needs to be on the tourism board. And that also includes, and we have those standing positions on the Chamber of Commerce, other positions that we seek to bring in are our business owners and industry partners so that we get that voice from government and from business owners and from industrial partners and so we create a conversation that is broader and wider and sure, we have people that disagree with things, but isn't that what we're trying to create? We're trying to create conversation, we're not all trying to get a board that just agrees on everything, to have differences, of which you've had some on this and I think that's healthy. I mean, this is a big decision and so there needs to be discussion and talk about what those differences are and I hope that we can be part of that solution for you and I think this governance structure maybe helps in that. And I just want to close my comments and before I open it for questions, I just want to say that I've had great opportunities as the President of the Chamber of Commerce and it's been something that I've truly appreciated. When I was considering the job in 2012, one of the conditions, you know, that I said when being interviewed is, I've never done this before, so I am gonna need to have the opportunity to be, to get some formal education about being a Chamber Director, about running an organization. You know, of course, I'd had the farm for 30 years and I'd been involved in politics at different levels and I'd worked at the bank, so I had a lot of understanding of some different things, but I actually hadn't run an organization or been involved in chamber work and one of the things that I identified and I took to the board and they supported was me taking advantage of the Institution for Organizational Management for Chambers. And it's a four-week school, it's one week each summer for four years and so I've had the opportunity to go to that and that's been a wealth of information and it allowed me to eventually to be certified, I actually have participated three years now and have one more year to go. But that's not what I think is important about all of this. What I think is important is the investment it demonstrates by the Board of, the Chamber of Commerce in this community. They understand that this is something bigger than we've done or been doing. They understand that communities that are doing economic development and doing it well are speaking with one voice, they have a common branding, they are pulling on the same rope at the same time, they have organizations that create synergies among staff. When we're a staff of one or two, there's not much discussion that happens there, but all of a sudden, as we start to create conversations, now as I have a membership director, as I have a social media person, as I have a person that's running our Young Entrepreneurs Program, as the Development Director is in our office, as we have our office manager and I, now we've got six people at the table creating conversation. And we can talk about what we're doing and get ideas and then we all go and do what we're responsible to do. We think that adding Convention and Tourism in this conversation is not only appropriate, but it's necessary. It's necessary that we have a common look as a community, that we become a destination that when people see and think of Franklin County, they see and think of something with a common brand. And I think that we can help that happen. And with that, I'm more than anxious to hear what I haven't talked about here this morning.
I was hoping, I guess after knowing what historically the transient guest tax, bed tax has collected in revenues that, and I'll ask this question to both, both applicants, that a proposal would come in around 140, just based on what historically those revenues are. are, and then some of the other uses we've identified for those dollars. Would you be able to size your proposal to fit that particularly? I was hoping that some of the labor, employee portion of your, we would be able to gain some efficiencies partnering with like a chamber where that we could get down to maybe one or one and a quarter full-time equivalents.
My budget was a bit of a swag, best, based on my experience running the chamber. I agree, there's definitely synergies that we can capture as two organizations. I didn't want to leave the putt short, and I also don't want to operate like the state of Kansas with zero budgeting. You know, it's not the idea, and of course, there'll be no co-mingling of phones. I think, I didn't say that. I hope that's understood. I mean, there, it, I don't want to budget this like the state of Kansas where, you know, we spend to zero and then we rebudget. You know, I, you know, where that, where that becomes weak is, you know, on December 31st, we still have to make payroll in January. So, I wanted, I didn't want to leave the putt short. I don't want to budget like our state's doing. This was a bit of a swag, but I think there's this, along with some other things I think are open for negotiation. I mean, there were things in the proposal that, or there were things left out of the proposal that I, that are going to have to be discussed about before we enter into a formalized contract. But the budget is certainly one of them. There was a request for a budget in there. I think this is reasonable. Can it be done more economically? I think as we fine tune, as we look for economies, I think they're there. Obviously, directory and printer services is the first that really comes to mind. But also, there's other things too. So, I think that's a fair comment. I don't want to say, yep, we can do it for that. I want to say, we, I think we can fine tune this and it can, it can get better.
My second is to my own board. We're about to have a conversation with you, or we are, and then once we hear the second proposal, I assume we'll have some public comment and then have a larger discussion. I want to say the notion of doing or not doing something solely because we did or didn't do it before is in fact regressive, particularly when we ask the applicants to put together a new progressive approach to this service. So, it's a horrible reason to do anything, so.
Commissioners, I do want to clarify one thing at this point, is that I've only asked the chamber to present. Here's the reason that I have done that, is that the, the reason that we had a committee to begin with and to evaluate these is to be able to go through all of this, is that we spent several, several hours going through all of the recommendations, reading through, reading through the proposals, going over them, sitting with the, each individual, and that is in an effort to save you time. At the end of that, we came to a recommendation, a final recommendation to make. We made that recommendation, but it is my opinion that you should have the opportunity to ask directly to the person that we're recommending any questions that you have. So, from that standpoint, I've only asked.
You invited the recommended provider.
Right.
One comment I want to put out there is that everybody understands this is not just a situation where we're going to pick someone, turn over the transient guest tax to them, and say, good luck, hope it works out. Our council is going to be drawing up a contract and negotiating that contract, so it's not like we're not going to have any input or anything in this once we pick someone, just turn over the money. That's not the way it's going to work. So, talking about county, running the department themselves, I feel that with us doing the contract, negotiating the contracts, we'll be a part of it, whatever is happening.
Well, I didn't see that on the governance chart up there at all. Franklin County has no input, period, after, we do have a person who sits on the Chamber of Commerce. But that governance says Franklin County and a block, and that's it. Then it goes to Chamber of Commerce, the CEO. They're going to get a tourism advisory board, which says, we're proposing this board to serve, and then it says, the tourism coordinator will be employed by the chamber, answers to the chamber CEO, responsibilities advisory committee, which they're going to have this advisory committee, which, what's, what do we have out there now? And then it says, the primary responsibilities of this position, the tourism coordinator, will be the day-to-day management of the DIC. I, you tell me from that governance program what I see out there and what, what it says they're going to do, and the chambers, the county commissioners have what control or what say? I, in Colt's defense, I, I agree with having that committee and what they brought to us. But in the very beginning, my comment was, either we tell the VICs, the VCB, this is what we want done, or else we go back and we hire it ourselves, because why are we just changing horses? You don't get anything different. Now, I'm not saying that you won't provide a different service or a different direction, but the, the governance part of it, from what I see, I don't, I don't see that being different.
Well, Commissioner Renaud, I'd like to respectfully disagree, and I appreciate your opinion. But I think the governance structure is part of what's big in this proposal and what's necessary. And I think the reason that is, is because it provides a political layer between the county commission and the visitors' director and the visitors' board, and I think that's necessary. I mean, you've created that layer with other organizations such as the hospital. And, and that allows that organization to make decisions that concern healthcare for Franklin County and not be answering directly to this board. And that's kind of what I'm trying to create here. I don't want this, this Convention and Visitors Bureau to be a political board. I want them to be concerned with visitors and tourism. The conversation, if you're having trouble with the way Convention and Visitors Bureau is providing tourism for Franklin County, the conversation needs to be with the CEO of the chamber, who needs to make his board aware, and we're not going to do this in a vacuum. That would not be reasonable to do that. We want to provide this service, and we realize, first of all, where the dollars would be flowing from, and who the taxing body is, and who's responsible to the taxpayers for that. I think, and this is just me observing from the outside, I think some of the breakdown was in the political layer and how the communication happened between the visitor center and the director and the county commission, and I think that's where some of the trouble started. And I think adding a layer in there could be helpful in that process. Now, that's, I realize you have a difference of opinion, and I respect that, but that's kind of where I think that maybe we could bring some strength to this.
And as my understanding that the request proposal, we had said, we got a one-year contract, and after one year, we sit there and we take a look at it and we decide what we're going to do or not. Is that not?
Well, all of that is yet to be decided. And with regard to his proposed management structure, it is just that, a proposal. In order for the chamber to provide these services, they are going to have to enter into a contract with Franklin County. The level of oversight that the board has can be anything that the board wants. I can make this contract look like anything that the five of you decide. And if the chamber doesn't agree with it, then the chamber won't get the service. But the fact of the matter is, it will come before you, and you guys will make the decision on the level of oversight that the board has, so. But that is all yet to be decided, and that will be discussed when we're talking about putting a contract together.
This is just what we suggested.
My only concern is what happened recently, and I, and I still don't know exactly what the concerns were. But whatever they were, they came from, obviously, at some point in time, a commissioner or commissioners or administrator, or whatever it was, and decided that, hey, we don't like where we were going. And obviously, as you just mentioned, regardless of how that commuturation trail is lined out to your CEO or to your board or whatever, at some point in time, it's like, no, what we are, our expectations are is different than what's being provided. I, I just have, have the concerns that we're, we're not.
Commissioner Renaud, one thing that I would to, to talk about that is that towards that end, and again, I come back to this, this is why we put a committee together to look at the individual, to, to hold up A versus B, to have apples to apples as much as we could. And I strove to put together as a top priority, an unbiased, fair committee that, from across the community, from across the county, to make sure that we are, are trying to, to be fair, and be fair in our assessment, and unbiased in our assessment of, of these things.
And I don't disagree with, with all of that.
And at the end of the day, that is what our recommendation is just based on. No previous history about this, just what is in front of us and the presentations that are presented. And you have the scores and the comments that were, those unbiased comments from those committee members. And that is what we were basing their recommendation, the final recommendation that comes to you on, is just that. No previous history or anything else like that.
And I want to stress that we were doing our very best to answer the proposal that we had in front of us. And so, we were answering it as where we wanted to start the conversation, understanding that it's still a negotiation, and that's up to you to decide.
Well, all I'm going to say, and I'll shut up, is that the governance committee that I saw there indicated to me that we just might as well just turn the guest transit tax over to the chamber and just let it go at that and then, and get out of the ballgame. But that's just, that's it.
We can open this up for public comment?
We have a public comment.
You have some signed up?
Mm-hmm.
Are we done? Thank you very much for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Okay. At this point, we'll open this up for public comment on this item. Keep in mind that on the public comment that goes back, you'll have the five minutes will be in effect, and only questions or comments on this item will be accepted for this public comment.
We have Gene Hurt sign up.
Gene.
I think that knowing John Cohen myself personally, and what he's done since he's taken over the helm of the Chamber of Commerce is one of 100% improvement from the past one. And, but my questions, you know, I think I enjoy being a Chamber of Commerce member because I like to go to the events and listen to the speakers that they have. But I am kind of like way, Waymire is, is I think this is a little bit, they're going to have to hold it to a certain cost. You know, we heard before, and I won't say it, but there are some members, and you have, with what the county administrator indicated a minute ago here, you have the comments from the committee, which we have not seen. I guess I'll have to do an open records request because there's one of them, comments to me was, there are some disconcerns here about this that's not being brought out. And I think the reason for it is, is this is only pertaining, the events, it's all for Ottawa, not for Waynesburg, not for Wellsville, not for the other communities or the towns. We, we all have certain things more than what was presented on the screen that, at Waynesburg and at these towns, and being emphasized to those because they are in this county. And it's got to be to where it represents all of them. Princeton was not mentioned. You know, Princeton needs to be, because they got even a company that's working down there for some time. And so, and Wellsville itself. So, that's the part I wanted to get out, is, is I want to know what some of those other comments, since one of them already indicated to me some of the comments made, I want to know what are all the comments this, this committee put out about concerns. For that, that's all I have.
All the comments that are made from, on the scoring sheets that have been submitted to me are contained on the consolidated score sheets. There's nothing that I left out.
Hey, any more questions on this? Okay. At this point, I guess we're going to look at a motion to take the recommendation from the committee and enter into contract negotiations with the chamber, Ottawa Chamber on this.
I'd say the chamber put together a good progressive proposal, which is what we asked them to do. The review committee agrees. I want to make a motion to accept their, well, to ask the council and administration to draft the contract with the intent of having Ottawa Chamber of Commerce provide these services.
Have a motion to enter into a contract negotiations with the Ottawa Chamber. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Janet?
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
I'm going to vote no. And the reason I'm going to vote no is, we got two proposals here to consider. I'm not completely convinced. The chamber gave a very good presentation, but I think the visitor center has been transitioning over the years to meet the needs of the county, and I think it was remiss by the commission way back when that if we had a problem with it, not to, not to speak to a problem to the visitors bureau. So, I'll vote no.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
No.
Chair Howard?
Game's to this.
Why you get paid a big bucks?
I'm going to vote yes.
Okay. With that, it takes us to staff reports.
Commissioners, could I, just a... I understand this isn't unanimous. I understand this is a controversy in the community, and I don't take that lightly. My goal is for us to be a strong community, and I know we have fences to mend, and I know we have to earn and prove our ability to do this. So, I respect the vote. I think that's appropriate. I think it reflects a lot. You are, I, I feel our commission is really the, I've used this term already, but the life and breath of all Franklin County, and I'm glad that there was discussion, and we will work to provide this service and with the respect what has been done, and thank you for the opportunity.
I have none at this time.
Derek?
Nothing today.
Sheriff?
We did have an exercise last Friday, active shooter training, and Alan's going to talk about that. But I would be remiss if I did not point out that our number one concern that came out of that exercise was our radio system. We had a very hard time communicating. That was not just on the sheriff's office frequencies, it was all of our frequencies. So, it is the system in overall that we had very bad communications with, and that was the number one concern that was brought forward out of that. I'm sure that he will talk about that, but I wanted to, to say that, and that is also on behalf of Chief Butler at the Ottawa Police Department. He wanted to make sure that, that it was brought up, that how bad our radio system went. We finished up Dare Camp last night, and it went very well, and a lot of kids there. We had, most of... We had, most of the counselors and workers there are volunteers, but there's a large portion, there's a large number of them that are still, that are employees of the Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. So, we were out there supporting that. We had our K-9 unit out there yesterday doing demonstrations for the kids. It was very well received. They really liked it, had a lot of good questions. Hopefully, there's, hopefully, it'll help get some of these people interested in getting into career in law enforcement someday, but that's not the overall goal. It was just to be out there and have a good time and help them emphasize on making good decisions and creating healthy habits for our lifestyle. And so, we made it through that week with no real problems. The weather was great, and we had a good time, so we're looking forward to next year, so...
How many were there, Joe?
I forget what the total number was. We had a, there were four or five that were, that had been signed up to attend that ended up not making it, and I think we ended up losing one that went home for, I don't remember if it was an illness or if it was a homesick thing or what, but we had one that went home after the first night. But I don't remember the exact, the exact number. We had 20 from the county. So, we have five from each of the grade schools in the county that get selected to go, and then Ottawa sends their people from USD 290 as well. And we did support that financially with, and I believe it was the alcohol tax that we were able to use for alcohol education. That was the, that was the, where the money came from, that the county contributed to that this year. And that is, again, to support the 20 county students that are able to go.
Allen?
Before I get into the exercise, I just want to mention, if you remember, a week or two ago, I talked to you about the FEMA declaration that our office in Public Works had been working on. I received an email from Kansas Division of Emergency Management last week that we have been denied by FEMA for that application through Region 7. The state is looking at appealing that. I would recommend that we contact all of our federal representatives and senators. I don't know why it was appealed. We met the threshold for our county, the state met their threshold. It's a policy issue within FEMA that caused this disaster to be totally different than any of others that we've had in the past. FEMA has brought to us the checkbook on a disaster to assist the locals. On this one, we were looking at, what, Jim, $600,000 in loss for our county. That's a substantial loss that we have that's going to come out of the Public Works budget. We did an impact statement. We did a lot of extra work on this disaster that we have never had to do before. I think there were 600 and some pictures that we took of our county roads. And we also, another issue that we've got is, last year, we had a disaster that we were approved on. Public Works was still working on repairing damage from last year. There's an appeal that's still held up, that's went past the 90-day timeframe for FEMA to respond back to that. We haven't got a response, so we've got $200,000 or $300,000 from last year that's still being held up. So, there's an issue with FEMA right now, and I think it's up to us to make some of those phone calls to our, I know it's an election year, and it may be a little more important to some of our legislators at the federal level, but they need to understand that we've got a problem at the federal level, especially with Region 7. I have no idea, I've never worked a disaster in the 12 years I've been doing this that has caused this much problems, and we've had to go through this much work to get a disaster approved by the President. So, with that being said, it's still being appealed, but like I told you two weeks ago, don't count on the money until we get the check in hand. And that, again, the appeal from last year, I don't think that they're giving us good reasoning why they're not approving our funding for the disaster. It has nothing to do with the Stafford Act. It's all a policy issue within FEMA and how they interpret the Stafford Act for us. So, with that being said, last week, last Friday, we did have a full-scale exercise at Ottawa University. I want to thank Ottawa University for hosting it for us. It took about eight months in planning with our planning team. We had over 100 responders that participated in that exercise at Ottawa University. I haven't got the count from RMH, but RMH also participated in it, and we sent several victims to the hospital for them to participate in their exercise too. So, we had a good turnout, and as the sheriff said, our radios were terrible. It didn't matter which department we were trying to talk on, the radios just were not working. We have got to do something with our radio system, and I know right now, Chairman Howard, you asked me the last meeting where we were at with that. It's still in engineering, and I know John's working on the financing. I think that needs to become a priority after seeing what went on in the scenario, and this was not part of our scripted scenario, the bad guy shot one of our officers. Now, one of the reasons for that could possibly be our radio communications, because we never got a description out, even though people tried, of what our suspect looked like. I don't want that to happen in real life because of radio issues. It's just plain and simple. We've got to have good communications in the county.
Do you attribute that to not having the penetration to those old buildings, which you think UHF might fix?
No, I think it's old equipment. We've got a radio system that we built 10 years ago that's sitting on our towers. We've got radios in service that are using that system that are older than that. A radio is designed by the manufacturer, a portable radio, to last five to seven years. A mobile radio, 10 years. Word our life expectancy on all of our radio equipment, and we've passed that on some of our portables and mobiles that are out in the field. Day to day, every day, I hear dispatch, and when I'm on the radio listening, dispatcher of the officers will ask for something to be repeated. To me, that's not acceptable.
I'm not trying to argue that there's a need. I agree and understand, just trying to make sure that this will fix. Is there something in the older equipment that diminishes over time?
Well...
To me, they don't just receive or not.
It's technology. I mean, it's just like the computer sitting there in front of you. You buy that computer, a new model comes out next month, that computer's good for four or five years. We've already got it scheduled on the county to be replaced in five years.
Sure, I understand, but like physically, what didn't work on it?
We weren't able...
Commissioners, I don't think it's prudent to go into heavy details about the capabilities of our radio system in public or on tape. We can certainly have these discussions in further, greater detail with Allen on a personal basis or the sheriff on a personal basis.
We are going to do additional testing for the new system after Friday.
As we make sure if we do spend a lot of money, it fixes what's actually...
Yep, yep. And our newer equipment, of course, is newer equipment for us. So, and we're hoping to get the latest and greatest technology that we can afford. So, with that, on our outcomes, communications, obviously, is one of the outcomes. We had policies and procedures. Additional training will be forthcoming. We really, the planning team already had ideas of what our outcomes would be. There wasn't any surprises to us on there. So, it was a good exercise. We actually had people that requested additional exercises and training, which is always good to hear. Ottawa University wants to host it again. They provided 20 or 30 of our actors that were there, and they thought it was an excellent exercise also. So, with that being said, we do have outcomes. We've got things we have to work on, and that was to be expected.
Hate to go to all that trouble and not have, not learn something, so...
Well, that's true.
Definitely went better than the Department of Florida, didn't it?
Yes, yeah. So, any other questions on the exercise? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Jim?
They're rocking the Jackson Road Bridge project this morning. It'll be hydro-seated tomorrow, and it's anticipated Friday it'll be open to through traffic.
Hi, just want to let you guys know I have the election book over here to sign.
Don't sneak off without signing all the election results that were canvassed on Monday.
With that, we'll go to Commissioner Comments and Board Reports. Roy, you want to start?
I went to the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting yesterday morning. They just mentioned the candidate forum, which turned out to be a reception, and they're going to plan on having another, probably the same type of deal, October 13th for the fall general election. Got a report from, let's see, Brandon Wilcox, he's a young man who has the Chamber now, is working on the membership, trying to get new members, and also get old members to sign up for another year, and he's doing a good job. He's tasked with contacting at least five, five members a week to try to get new members. Young man from Ottawa University, graduated from Ottawa University, Sammy Ford is heading up the Young Entrepreneurs Academy, and he talked a little bit about that. They're going to start promoting it in the high school and junior high age level for that program. It's a pretty long program, and it kind of teaches what it takes to be, start a business or be in business, kind of gets people started to be looking to the future of what they want to be. So, they've got that program available. 290, just said they're getting ready to get going here shortly, and we'll have a reception with the, all the new teachers and physicians and all those folks here. When is that, John, that luncheon? That's coming up real soon. That's on August 17th will be that luncheon for all the new educators, high schools graduate, or not graduating, but getting their classes this week. And they've got a coffee this Friday at the new FM, KOFLOFM, and marketing place on K68 this Monday at 8 o'clock, if anyone wants to come to that. And they talked about OU's Fusion, which is downtown on 68 on August 23rd, with kind of welcoming all the new, all the Ottawa University students to downtown Ottawa. It's going to be at the Courthouse lawn and that block off the street in front of the courthouse. And there's about 30 businesses signed up to be represented at that event, so that'd be good to introduce OU to the business community downtown. That's coming up on the 23rd from 68 o'clock. And I think that's about it for the Chamber.
I have nothing this week. Report?
Thursday night, I went to the Peoria Township Budget Hearing. Then, Monday night, I attended the Lane City Council meeting, and they also had their budget hearing, discussed the Lane Fair and some of the business that took place from that. Then on Tuesday, yesterday, I was at the Wellsville Chamber meeting. They decided to try a breakfast meeting to see how that would impact attendance, and basically, the same people came to that that came at the noon hour, so they were going to revert back to the normal 12 o'clock time on the second Tuesday. They have just finished up their bylaws, going through the bylaws and getting them, hopefully, up to date, and so, probably the next meeting there, they'll have a new set for everybody to look at and go over. I think Wellsville has their big Friday night car show coming up, last Friday of August, and certainly look for a good turnout there. That's it. Okay, I attended Waynesburg City Council last night. Left the jet out in the vehicle, but the two, the main items, they approved going online to pay their utility bills. They've not had that in the past. They are now going to be able to let residents pay their bills online if they choose to. And probably the other main topic, James, they did vote yes to return to the FCDC, so they'll be coming back in as members to the FCDC. Those are probably the main two topics that they discussed last night, and that is all I've attended. With that, there is no study session Monday, next meeting, August the 17th. And if nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
A motion second, all in favor?
All opposed.
We're adjourned.